I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of November 8th, 2018, to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Meritato?
Here.
Trustee Bojack?
Here.
And Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Please join Mayor Lynda Jackson, the Village Board of Trustees, the Glendale Heights Police Department, and the Glendale Heights Post VFW 2377 for a ceremony at Veterans Memorial Park as we honor all military personnel, past and present. The ceremony will begin at 11:00 a.m. on Veterans Day, Sunday, November 11th. The event includes a flag and color guard presentation, rifle salute, and tribute to our fallen warriors. We will also be recognizing the 100th anniversary of the end of World War I with a centenary wreath laying and a tolling of a bell 21 times, symbolizing the bells of peace, as we honor the men and women who served our country during this time. We encourage everyone to stop by the Village Hall and visit our special World War I display through the end of November. The display features pictures and historical information about the importance of World War I. Puppies are also available at all Village counters wherein remembrance of those lost during World War I and all previous wars. Please note that all Village offices will be closed on Monday, November 12th, in observance of Veterans Day. For more information, please call the Mayor's office at (630) 909-5303. The next coffee with the Mayor and Village Board is scheduled for Saturday, December 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Mayor or Village Board, please call the Mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
To enable an efficient and effective street sweeping schedule, parking on streets is not allowed throughout the month of November, November between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on one designated day. Color-coded no-parking signs have been posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is not allowed on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the Village website. Please note, residents are allowed to park on the apron portion of their driveway during your designated street sweeping day. For any questions on street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Help spread Christmas cheer to those in Glendale Heights. The Village of Glendale Heights Christmas Sharing Program will be helping those in need this holiday season by providing meals and gifts to families. Gift tag listings wish for items will decorate the tree located on the first floors of the Civic Center, Civic Center, or Civic Center, Center for Senior Citizens, and Sports Hub starting November 19th. Please attach gift tag to your unwrapped gift donation and return it to the Civic Center or the Center for Senior Citizens by December 7th. For more information in how you can get involved in Christmas sharing, please contact Deb McKenzie at (630) 260-6050. While writing your holiday greeting cards to friends and family, please remember our military personnel who have or who are currently serving our country during the holidays. The Village is collecting holiday greeting cards and will mail them in time for the holiday delivery. Please drop off your holiday greeting cards to the Village Hall by December 3rd. Please do not put cards in envelopes. Decorate cards with glitter or add personal information like email or social media. For more information, please call (630) 909-5327. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Visit the historic house located at 311 Windy Point Drive on December 3rd at 6:30 p.m. and experience what a Victorian Christmas might have been like 100 years ago. Admission is free and refreshments will be served. Tours of the home will be offered and children will have the opportunity to make a Victorian decoration to take home. For more information on the Victorian Christmas, please contact the Mayor's office at (630) Trustee Meritato?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Breakfast for Santa will be celebrated at Glendale Lake Scarf Club on Saturday, December 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Breakfast includes all-you-can-eat pancakes with sausage and a beverage. The price for an adult breakfast is $5 and a children's breakfast is $3. Photos with Mr. and Mrs. Claus are $2. No registration is required and the event fee is paid at the door. Don't miss your chance to tell Santa what is on your Christmas wish list. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Stop by the Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens on Wednesday, November 14th, from 8:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. to get a jump start on your holiday shopping. You'll find an assortment of handmade crafts ranging from scarves, jewelry, ornaments, and much more. This event is open to the community and you do not have to be a member of the Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens. For more information, please call the Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Bojack?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights invites the entire community to celebrate the start of the holiday season with the annual tree lighting ceremony on Monday, November 26th. Santa and Mrs. Claus will be our guest of honor and holiday decor and lights will illuminate the Civic Center. Enjoy the sounds of the holidays through the performance of a Glendale Heights choral group starting at 7:00 p.m. Sharing the holiday spirit as Mayor Lynda Jackson, the Village Board of Trustees, and Mr. and Mrs. Claus illuminate the Civic Center complex with just a flick of the switch. Then be sure to stop by the Center for Senior Citizens after the ceremony to warm up with free refreshments. For more information, please contact the Mayor's office at (630) 909-5303. The Glendale Heights Police Department's Record Division has new hours effective immediately. They will now be open Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. and close from 2:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. They will close Saturday mornings at 2:00 a.m. and reopen Mondays at 7:00 a.m. They will also be closed on all major holidays as all emergencies, police call 911. For non-emergency-related matters, please call (630) 260-6070. Chief, I've got a question for you. Say if somebody comes in on Sunday night, will they still be somebody downstairs or how will they contact the police if somebody comes in?
Come into the vestibule and they pick up the phone and they get our dispatch center.
Oh, just, okay. Is there going to be a sign there or something?
There is a sign.
There is, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Trustee Schroder?
Thank you, Mayor Jackson.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens is a senior health insurance program. It's sponsored site and offers open enrollment assistance for senior citizens now through December 7th. Our trained volunteer counselors can provide a one-on-one assistance to Medicare beneficiaries and their caregivers. SHIP volunteers can provide you with the information you need to make educated decisions about your insurance. This free statewide health insurance counseling service is sponsored by the Illinois Department of Aging. So stop by the Center for Senior Citizens to pick up your Prevention Service Program information. And please call the Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050 to schedule an appointment for assistance in your health insurance questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. Next, I need to call for a public hearing by the Mayor and Board of Trustees on November 29th, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. for the purpose of discussing the annual tax levy, assessment, and collection of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018, and ending April 30th, 2019. So if everybody would please mark their calendars, I would appreciate it. First proclamation we have is a proclamation to proclaim November 11th, 2018, as World War I Remembrance Day. Whereas a century ago, 4.7 million American families sent their sons and daughters off to World War I, and whereas the resources of our entire nation were brought to bear on the war effort, and whereas 351,153 men from the state of Illinois served selflessly and honorably in World War I, and whereas 116,516 Americans gave their lives in the war and more than 200,000 were wounded, and whereas the tolling of bells is a traditional expression of honor and remembrance, and whereas in November 2018, the world will commemorate the 100th anniversary of the armistice that ended the fighting in World War I at 11:00 a.m. November 11th, 1918, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, and whereas on April 6th, 2018, the United States World War I Centennial Commission called upon all Americans across the nation to toll bells in remembrance of those who served in World War I on Armistice Day, November 11th, 2018. Now therefore I, Lynda Jackson, President of the Village of Glendale Heights, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2018, as World War I Remembrance Day and call upon all Americans across the nation to pause at 11:00 a.m. on November 11th, 2018 and recognize, commemorate, and give thanks for the service and sacrifice of those who served in World War I. So if there are no objections, I will sign the proclamation.
Please.
Okay. Next proclamation is a proclamation to proclaim November 15th, 2018, as School Board Member Day. And our last proclamation is a proclamation to proclaim the month of November as American Diabetes Awareness Month. So if there are no objections, I will also sign those two.
No objections. Go forward.
Okay. Thank you. Holly?
Hello.
Hi.
We're going to take a few minutes tonight to talk about recycling. There have been some changes and it's important that we lay these changes and re-educate our community what they need to do to help us. So the worldwide recycling industry for the sales and use of recycling products is changing and requiring the stream of products recycled become stricter to avoid contamination. In our efforts to support a green environment and reuse products by recycling, it's necessary to re-educate ourselves and residents on what we can and cannot recycle. While Republic Services is communicating, "When in doubt, throw it out," we support when we can, meet the requirements of recycling, let's continue to recycle, and when we can, let's reuse those products. We're going to put on a brief video that helps everyone understand the recycling a little bit better.
Recycling can be a simple thing that has a big impact on all of us. Republic Services can help you make a difference in your community with these quick and easy tips to becoming a better recycler. It's as simple as one, two, three. First, know what to throw. You should always recycle paper and flattened cardboard, metal cans and plastic bottles and jugs with the lids on. Things like construction materials, yard waste, and greasy pizza boxes are not recyclable. Here are some common household items that are mistaken for recyclables. These items can contaminate or interfere with the recycling process. When in doubt, throw it out. Now that you know what to recycle, it's time to make sure it's properly prepared. Recyclables should be empty, clean of all food and liquids, and dry before you place them in your recycling container. The last step is the easiest. Never bag or bundle your recyclables. Placing each item in the container individually allows us to sort recyclables faster and more efficiently. This will ensure they become quality materials that can be turned into useful new products. By following these three simple steps, know what to throw, empty, clean, dry, and keep it loose, you can help eliminate contamination and minimize the amount of recyclable material that goes into a landfill. Together, we can make a difference in our homes, our communities, and our world. Learn more on how to become a better recycler at recycling simplified dot com.
So, you know, when I talk to our Green Team members, it becomes confusing because they think all of us want to do the right thing and we want to recycle. So as with everything changes, we also don't want to contaminate it because then the recycling items are contaminated and actually creates a worse situation as they're processing those recyclables. So we just want to remind everyone that paper and cardboard are recycling. You know, they include our newspapers, our envelopes, junk mail, election brochures are a big one right now. We can put those in recycling, which we all have gotten a lot of. Phone books, magazines, Carver boxes, no pizza boxes because the grease has contaminated that. And again, don't recycle those pizza boxes. I asked for a few things, just kind of what we think about recycling at the holidays. Wrapping paper, we shouldn't be recycling wrapping paper. There's actually a wax on the wrapping paper that makes it not able to be recycled. I'd be the first one that would put it in there, but that's one of those no items. And no hardcover books. I don't quite understand that, but I guess with the hardcover on, it makes it more difficult to recycle. So the best thing is we have hardcover books. Maybe we can donate those somewhere else. Plastics, water bottles are great, takeout containers, no styrofoam with the plastic ones, soda bottles, ketchup bottles, which they explained. But especially on the plastic bottles, we need to make sure that we rinse them, ketchup and so forth. If we leave any of that residue in, there's a chance first that item can't be recycled, but it can contaminate other items as it's going through that process. A lot of us know this, but we tend to want to do it, is the grocery bags, bring those back to the grocery stores. I think most grocery stores have a location where you can bring those back. Those are not recyclable in our curbside recycling program. Plastic Saran Wrap, Bubble Wrap. Tupperware is one that can't be recycled. Again, Tupperware, I would probably maybe box it up, bring it to Goodwill, see if there's another place it can be reused. Plastic hangers, plastic dinnerware, and plastic mini-blinds, the same thing. Don't recycle those. When we can, try to either recycle them in a different fashion. Aluminum metals, yes, we can still continue to aluminum beverage cans, food cans, wash those. Lot of soup cans, make sure that you rinse those out. And scrap metal. And again, don't recycle tools, metal utensils. Glass, the same thing, glass must be cleaned. Beverage containers are great. Glass food jars are great. Don't recycle glass windows, flower pots, and holiday lights. Though I kind of put those in those categories, the Village itself has a special recycling program for those. You know, when I talk to Republic Services, everything can be recycled. We have a battery recycling program here, and there are a lot of other different ways to recycle, but our curbside recycling program are not for all those wide span of items. So we need to keep that streamlined clean. So as we move forward, Republic Services has to keep their recycling stream clean. So they're taking steps due to the changes in the worldwide market of recycling to keep that clean, and unfortunately, if, they've kind of expressed to us that they've had some odd items recycled. You know, they gave us an example of somebody that threw a bowling ball in the recycling container and some different things that I wouldn't necessarily think of. But again, I think people are trying to do the right thing. So Republic Services has actually started, but they're starting a very soft program, and I've put the oops card up there. When they notice that the recycling container is contaminated, depending upon the contamination, there's a chance that your recycling container will be rejected and they won't pick it up. Now, what the resident will need to do is empty that recycling into the garbage can, and of course, we have a great unlimited garbage collection program, so no one will be charged extra, but they won't pick up that recycling container. Republic Services isn't going to be opening those tops and inspecting those items. At this point, they're just looking for obvious items as we move forward. So we want to continue to be green and do those proper recycling, and we really don't want the inconvenience for our residents to have the recycling rejected, and we want to continue to make those proper decisions moving forward. So what we've asked, we've tried to just brought some information tonight. For more information, if you've visited our Village, the Village website, of course, at www.glendalehighs.org, and under the Government column, if you click the Environment Awareness tab, our Green Team has put some great resources on there. SCAAS also has some great resources. You can also find more information on how to recycling at the Republic Services website at republicservices.com and look for the Recycle Simplified. Or you can always call the Republic Services hotline at 847-981-0091. And again, our effort is to continue to be green. We want to recycle, but we want to make sure that those recyclables are not rejected. And I think that all of us are an advocate of recycling, so if it's not at our curbside, perhaps we could find another location, or we could clean items and bring certain things to Goodwill and other sources that they're able to put back out for use in better ways. Okay?
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
That was very informative.
You know, it was quite interesting on some of the items that I didn't realize we couldn't recycle because all of us tried to do the right thing, and it does become a bit confusing.
Chester?
Yeah, Holly, I've got a question for you. My wife shreds all her stuff, anything with the names on there, puts it in large plastic bags. I talked to Kay about that. She said you can't put it in recyclable anymore, throw it in the trash. But that's shredded paper. And if you leave the paper loose in there, it'll go all over the street.
Republic Services does not want the shredded paper in the recycling container. What I might suggest, if it's really truly recycled paper and it's not commingable to certain plastics, if you can get a, not a plastic, but a paper bag and put those shredded papers inside a paper bag, that should be accepted because it's paper and paper, but they need to be contained in a container, and they don't want you to put those plastic bags full of the shredded paper in the recycling. So if you put it in a paper bag or a similar grocery bag that you might get a paper bag and put those shredded papers in there, that should be a recyclable item.
All right, thanks.
Mary?
I want to say I'm really guilty of putting things in those plastic bags, but Holly, I always do it because it keeps everything contained and you don't have all these cans flying all over the street.
What happens when, we had a different video that we thought about showing, it's almost like a manufacturing line. So those recyclables go on a line, and they've got to open the bags, and it creates actually a slowdown. What I might suggest, at least for you, if you're trying to keep your recycling can clean, is you can still put a garbage can liner in it, but then dump it into your garbage can and make sure that that lid is closed. If you don't have a recycling container with a lid, I know that, I believe they also have different sizes, so if you're a smaller household or a senior, I'll follow up on that to see if there's something smaller, but to make sure that that lid stays closed, and hopefully that will contain those from going all over the street.
No, I do have a lid. I don't have that problem. I just did it because I thought it was much cleaner. Another thing is that I didn't know that shoes were recyclable, and once I found out that they were, I put those in a plastic bag so they don't get all messed up.
I'm going to look here because I don't think that shoes are accepted under our curbside recycling.
Oh, I thought they were.
Shoes are recyclable, but I don't think they are on our, on our.
They're a special item, Holly.
They're a special item, and I may need to follow up on that.
You can do those, we have a bin at the Sports Hub where you can recycle them, so that's just one of those special items that the Village does. So we actually have a bin at the Sports Hub where you can get rid of your shoes.
All right. And the last thing I want to mention is that Christmas paper, I can't believe that they're not, we put all our Christmas paper in the recycle.
I know, again, we all want to do the right thing, but I understand there's an actual wax coating on the paper and that when they do the paper process to make new pulp into remanufacturing, that the wax actually creates a problem and you can't use that.
I don't think the people know that. I'm so glad you said that on TV.
I think that's why we're trying to get that information out. So as we're all trying to do the right thing, some of those things can't be recycled, again, on the curbside. So we try to put some resources out there, and again, SCAAS is a great location. If you have questions, they can also help and guide as well as Republic Services.
Thank you. That was very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Holly. Next, we go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, we go on to the consent agenda. Trustee Meritato?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Bojack?
Yes.
And Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. We now go to old business, which there is none. New business. There is a motion to waive first reading on new business items two through four. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is waived on new business items two, three, and four. Number two, an ordinance to approve and authorize a variation to the rear yard setback for 1781 Devon Drive in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is from the October 18th Committee of the Whole. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2018-73. Trustee Meritato?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Bojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
And Trustee Sullivan?
Yes. Ordinance 2018-73 is approved. Number three, an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus personal property owned by the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is Police Department Article 36. First reading was waived, so this would be ordinance number 2018-73. reading was waived, so this would be ordinance number 2018-74. Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote. Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
And Trustee Light.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-74 is approved. Number four, an ordinance to amend Title IV, Chapter III of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is liquor license for Hankaku sushi. First reading has been waived, and this would be ordinance number 2018-75. Trustee Sullivan. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote. Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
And Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-75 is approved. Number five, an ordinance to amend Chapter VII entitled Parking Regulations of Title VII entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. And that relates to parallel parking on driveway apron during street maintenance. And this is first reading. We are now back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, a motion would be in order to recess to the Committee of the Whole, so we can come back and adjourn to executive session. Trustee Sullivan.
Motion to adjourn to Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Recess.
I'm sorry, recess.
That's okay.
I knew that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is recessed, and Committee of the Whole goes to Trustee Meritato.
I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole meeting, number eight, 2018, to order. Uh, is there? Is there any items? Mike?
Uh, wildlife.
What is it?
Wildlife.
Uh, I got one myself. Stop saying. Anybody else? Oh, man. Bill?
Uh, public hearing notice signs.
Public hearing signs. Okay, anyone else?
No, what was Bill's?
Uh, public hearing signs.
Okay.
Okay, we go to public comment. Does anybody in the public have anything they'd like to say? Being none. Go to committee recommendations, which there isn't any. We've already discussed regarding, number one, proposed changes to vacant property regulations. Was that, be you, Joanne?
Yes, sir. Uh, the village adopted the vacant property registration in 2009, and it's been a very successful regulation, uh, registration. It enables the village staff, the community development department, and the police department to monitor vacant properties. We are recommending some minor changes to the regulation. The first is that property owners are required to register by February 1st each year rather than on a rolling level. Right now, it's just annual from when they register. This will allow us to have better coordination of when they register and, and keep track of them. And the second is to clarify the language that it includes condominium units that are vacant. Right now, the language is, is a little bit vague. Uh, we believe it does cover condominium units, but, uh, we just want to clarify that so there's no argument or no discussion that if it's a vacant unit within a building, it's still considered vacant. And finally, that if it's vacant for more than 90 days, then they are required to register. Right now, it's six months. Um, and we found that it's a little bit too long for a property to be vacant, and we're more likely to find it due to a problem than if they are required to register a lot sooner, within three months. Those are the proposed changes.
Okay, is there any, uh, questions? Okay, I had, uh, Joanne, so if, if somebody owns a piece of property that says added estate, and we notify them, right, they, they still register?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we go to number two, presentation of the 2018 tax levy recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. You need that to go to the board?
Oh, okay.
Do we have to go to the board for that?
Yes.
Yeah.
It does need to be an ordinance presented to the board.
Okay, motion, mayor?
Motion to send it to the board with the recommendation to concur.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Being none, we'll move it to the board. Number two, presentation of the 2018 tax levy recommendation.
That would be me.
Bill?
Who else would it be?
Who else would it be, right?
Always a privilege to come before you and speak tonight, especially about taxes. I want to just go over a couple of objectives, and we'll go through this as quickly and as clearly as we can. We will attempt to give you a refresher on the steps behind the tax levy process, and we hope to also give you a recommendation of the tax levy for 2018. Taxing authorities all across DuPage County send their levy requests to the county clerk. The tax bills are prepared by the county treasurer, and they go out at the end of April. Taxpayers pay their tax bills in two installments generally, in June and September. And once the county treasurer receives those funds, they distribute the funds to the village. There are two main ingredients that go into calculating the property tax bill. The first is determining the equalized assessed value, or EAV, of a property. In our region, the EAV is the result of taking one-third of the market value of a parcel, and then applying an equalization factor to that figure. Tax bills are then calculated by multiplying the EAV after any deductions for homesteads or other exemptions multiplied by the tax rate. Really simple. In examining tax bills throughout the village, there are factors that cause the village's share to be different in certain parts of the community. These differences are mainly related to school districts, fire districts, and townships. An example of that is shown here, with a tax bill from the Bloomingdale Township is the far bill to the left, on the north side of town, and Bloomingdale Township on the south side. And in the far right is a tax bill from the Milton Township, which is south of North Avenue. And you can see the arrow points to the respect, the respective, pardon me, village portion of those tax bills. You can always find our tax bill amount in the middle of the bill. With at least a dozen different taxing authorities, it can be confusing to understand who gets tax levy money and how much. The currency chart shown here represents the breakdown in percentages of taxes retained by each taxing district. On average, and depending on where you live, 10.9% of the property tax burden comes from the village. So in our example, if your tax bill is $6,000, the village receives 10.9% of that, or $654, while the remaining portion goes to other taxing districts. As you all know, schools get the highest percentage by far. So when we peel back the layers of an average $6,000 property tax bill, we're able to see what each separate taxing body receives. An important distinction within the village is that there's no park district taxing body. Instead, the village has a recreation department. What this means to residents is that the $654 includes our levy for recreation. And because the village includes recreation as part of its overall tax levy, our comparison to other municipalities can sometimes appear higher. Major advantage to having a recreation department as opposed to a separate park district are the benefits of unified administration, human resources, finance, purchasing, information technology, and other support services. To give you some perspective on the difference between park district tax levies and the village's levy for recreation, note in the table here that the village had the lowest rate in 2017 compared to surrounding communities that have separate park districts. We're all the way at the bottom. Going back to our previous $654 property tax bill example, this table shows you the breakdown of what services the village provides with those tax dollars. This chart shows you how the equalized assessed values, or EAVs, have fluctuated over the last decade. Beginning in 2016 is when we saw the first signs of a housing value rebound. And last year, the EAV was almost back to the level that it was in 2012. On a local level, we've seen firsthand evidence of the strengthening economic landscape. And now for the crescendo, crescendo, oh my gosh. In the nine years, from 2008 to 2016, the village essentially held the line when it came to property tax levies, keeping a promise made by the mayor and the village board trustees to be fiscally responsible with public dollars. As a direct consequence of state actions in 2017, the village was forced to increase the property tax levy by 5%. With the village seeing strong and steady commercial development fueled by improving economic conditions, the staff is able to recommend a zero, zero percent increase for the 2018 tax levy. That would be zero as in zero, zero. If the village board concurs with this recommendation, a courtesy public notice will be placed in the newspaper. This is the example shown. A public hearing will be taking place at the November 29th village board meeting. Residents, taxpayers can contact my office anytime to answer any questions about anything with the tax levy or village finances. And my contact information is shown. Thank you.
Thank you very mu, oh, it's your meeting.
Oh, go ahead, mayor, take over.
No.
Is there any questions? You have any questions, mayor?
No. No, I just have a statement. Thank you very much, all executive staff, finance department, everything, for keeping a lid on the taxes as much as we possibly can. You've done a great job.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion in this to, uh?
Do we need to pass this to the board again?
Motion.
I don't think so.
I mean, you could do it, but it's not necessary.
Not necessary.
Not necessary.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we go to, any other discussion with anybody? No? Okay, now we go to, uh, Mike. Wildlife or?
Yeah.
Wildlife.
Wildlife.
It's, it's, it's kind of a hot topic with all the residents I've spoke to in the last couple of weeks. Um, we've had, everybody has had an immense amount of skunk population in the area, and with that, an increase with coyote population coming through. So I'm looking at people that have had, um, seen other neighbors distributing food out to allow, you know, feeding either like feral cats, or, or strays, or, or anything. But it's picking up skunks, and it's picking up other small animals, which will, in turn, I believe, bring the coyotes and stinkies and everything else, and, and my dog being skunked twice. You know, so it's, it's happening to everybody, and everybody is concerned and upset with it. I know there's little to nothing we can do about the skunks coming through except for a trapping program that we have. And that's a great program, but a lot of residents really don't have the extra cash to be putting out for trapping, even if we're covering a percentage of it. Um, I'm looking at these people that are feeding the animals, leaving bread and, and cereal and other items out for them to eat. Is there anything we can do about this? I mean, is, do we have a strong enough ordinance that can stop this?
I'll turn it over to the chief.
Currently, we, currently, there's not an ordinance on the books that prohibits the feeding of nuisance or wild type animals, including waterfowl, right, geese and ducks and that kind of stuff. Uh, since this topic's come up, we have researched. Um, believe it or not, not many communities have ordinance against that.
Really?
However, we did find some. And we have sent those to the village attorney's office, and together, we're working on drafting an ordinance that hopefully in the next board meeting or the board meeting after that will be ready for you guys to review and approve.
I would appreciate that, because it was, it was a very hot topic, and a lot of people are really upset by it. So anything we could do would really be really great. But, all right, thank you.
Sharon?
Some of the neighbors, because I had a, like, we caught four skunk and two raccoons. But my three neighbors, we all chipped in, you know. I mean, the village had helped us. But we chipped in because they were everywhere. I mean, oh, my god.
Are everywhere.
But feeding them is not right, because they won't leave you alone, none. But, I mean, you know, they can, maybe you can help each other by doing that.
Bill? Joanne, something just popped into my mind. Do we have any requirements in the building code for enclosing areas underneath decks, sheds, something like that, to eliminate nesting areas for the animals?
We do not. There is not a requirement.
Okay, because, uh, you know, I've got a, a deck with a latticework, and then I put hardware cloth behind it to keep the mice out of there. So the, the lattice keeps the bigger animals out, and the hardware cloth keeps the smaller out. Uh, is that something that's, uh, neighboring communities regulate this, or is this just good practice?
It's certainly good practice. I'm not aware, but we can certainly survey other communities and see if they have any regulations, uh, to, to block that. Certainly makes sense.
Okay. Uh, the, the reason this came to mind is that, uh, Pat and I were out on the golf course, and skunk comes out from underneath a, a deck over there, and it's like, what, nine, 10?
Aunt Bill ran.
I did.
I would, too.
Yeah.
All right, chief, how, how do, how do we enforce it? I mean, if, if we do have an ordinance, how do, how do we enforce it?
Certainly would be case by case, and it would have to be based on complaints from residents and neighbors. Uh, you know, we're right, we're really not going to go out there and know about somebody feeding wild animals unless somebody calls us and tells us. You know, if we see a bowl of food out, it could be for a pet, it could be for anything. Um, we certainly don't have the right to go up on everybody's property and ask if they're, you know, who they're feeding or what they're feeding. So it would be based on calls from, complaints from residents and neighbors and that kind of thing.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I thank you.
Okay, Bill, we'll go to, uh, you, uh, public hearing signs.
Okay. Joanne has received several phone calls from me in the past where you have the signs posted by applicants for variances. And you'll see notice of public hearing, and the notice is six months ago, or, you know, sometimes even longer. Uh, I'd like to explore some method of removing these in a timely manner, uh, even if it comes down to the, the village removing it and charging the applicant a fee for removing them. Now, was that ever done?
Uh, we haven't done that. Uh, we, actually, ironically, we've been talking about it. Mike Maron and I have been talking about it frequently. Uh, I just drove down North Avenue this weekend, and the Burger King signs were still up. So we did put them on notice to Burger King and Popeyes to have those removed. Uh, we are investigating the sign itself to see if it can be, um, made more generic. So the village could actually put them up and put, take them down, or have them reused. So we are investigating some options for that right now.
What does it cost to prepare a sign like that?
I honestly don't. I honestly don't know. The applicants currently pay for those signs and put them up.
Okay.
They're expensive.
Okay, well, then, maybe, you know, if we have generic signs, that the applicant can pay the village an equivalent, or maybe even a slightly discounted amount, and the village takes care of the, the changing of the dates and installation and removal.
Good idea.
You should look into it. Chester?
Yeah, Joanne, I brought that up many years ago when Marty Olson was here. And he was gonna do, put something on the books on that. If you can check into that, I'd appreciate it. And also, at the, on the same public hearing signs, I asked if they would put the date in red, because when you're driving by, you can't see nothing. But if you've seen the date on there and the time, that would be helpful.
The, the regulations don't currently require that and they currently are very specific about the, yeah, very specific about the actual size and what it needs to say. Uh, so we are taking a look to see if we can, uh, I just, I don't, the older I get, the harder I have a hard time right, reading all of that as I'm driving by. So if we can actually reduce the language on that to make it easier to say, "call village hall for more information" or something like that. So we're investigating, we'll be working with, with Mr. Strino's office to see what, we have to follow state law. Uh, it's pretty s- uh, specific, uh, but stay within those parameters and see if we can change that and then have those signs taken down in a more timely manner.
Yeah, check with, um, some paperwork with Marty Olson. This was going back before your time. And I brought that up because I've seen so many signs, public hearing, when we were doing a construction army trail road. So, double check it.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, so we're checking on, uh, Mike's wildlife and, uh, Bill's public signs. And now it's my turn. Chief, we're putting a stop sign on Reeves and Golden. Mm-hmm. Can you check another area for me? Gerberto and Wrightwood. Cause them two-corner houses have high bushes and we, uh, there's a yield sign there now.
Okay.
You'll see it if you drive by. I appreciate it.
And you want to look and change the yield to a stop?
Yeah. If we take a look at it and see what you think.
Look.
Okay, is there any other?
Nope.
Okay, being none, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pojek. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, don't leave yet, guys. Okay. Like to call this village board meeting back to order. Um, we did public discussion of agenda items three times.
Yes, we did.
I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss pending litigation and probable or imminent litigation pursuant to the Open Meetings Act Five, ILCS 120 slash two, C. 11.
Sheesh.
Trustee Schmidt?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
And trustee Light?
Yes.
We will be adjourning to executive session and have a good two weeks, everybody.